The meeting to order at this time. And I'd like, uh, Priscilla. Can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance and salute to the New Mexico flag, please?
... United States of America, and to the Republic which is God, one nation, and the God of the people, who give you this life. And the good Lord has created the United States of America, and we are in perfect friendship with him on this night.
Thank you. Go ahead, Priscilla. Now, we will go down to approving our agenda for today. Under consent agenda.
President Long, members of the board, actually, if you don't mind me going through my changes first.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the first one I would like to remove from the agenda. Four F on the consent agenda. Also, a change of a word. It's an important word, but it's a part of G on the same section of consent agenda. Section four G, the very end of that paragraph or sentence, it mentions supervise, and it need that change to evaluate. Also, if I could just mention that even though it has already been removed from the agenda, the report on the Henderson case will take place on the 21st of August and not tonight. That's the reason it was removed. And also, I want to make a clarification on... I'll save my comments for the minute approval.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes. Priscilla?
Um, I have a couple of comments. First of all, on the approval of the minutes, um, June 19th meeting was already approved on July 10th. Um, Mr. Shaw motioned and four votes were in favor of the, um, approval of minutes. Uh, that needs to be clarified, why we are approving that again. Also, um, I'm glad Mr. Hyatt did remove four F, um, but I would also like to remove four G due to, sir, um, that is not the authority of the body of this board to waive, um, nepotism on staff. We have the authority to waive nepotism, uh, for the superintendent, but not for, um, staff members. Um, so I would like both of those to be removed. And if you would like to contact Mr. Joe Geen, um, or get legal counsel, um, first, that would be also my recommendation, but at this time, I don't think it should be on agenda for us to make those approvals when we do not have the authority to do so, sir. So, um, that is my comment on those two items at this time.
Good question, thank you. I'd like, uh, Mike to make some comments on that, one for four G. And on the meeting minutes, I think it's just, we're proven that we're humans, we make mistakes, so.
President, sir, President Long, Mrs. Manuelito, on four F, um, again, I just want to clarify that F and G are two different items, and if there's a law that you can reference for that, I know that F, there is a nepotism law. I don't believe that law pertains to employees within the school district that regard is regarding spouses or direct relatives of the board. I can look that up, but with school starting soon, um, I think that I would like to get that done tonight, if possible. I can have the law looked up so we can look at it, but I specifically believe it relates to board members. So, this happens even, and it happens all over with respect to principals supervising spouses, or in other cases, direct relatives. It's happened in this district, and it's happened recently in Zuni, who also served under our legal authority recently, so. So, what I'm asking is just that maybe it be moved and pulled out and put as an action item later in the agenda to give us a chance to pull up that law to review it, or we can wait.
Um, Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Superintendent, um, you know, I think, I know previous, in previous times with other superintendents, you know, I know that they took on the actual role of doing the waiver for their, for employees. Uh, we, I have, I don't believe, as long as I've been on the board, never have ever approved a waiver, but I know of spouses that have been working within the district and things waived, and I think it's done through superintendent.
The, I did talk to Joe Geen about this just, um, today, and the policy that you want me to state as the state statute of 22 dash five dash six that you guys did put on here, but if you would see, it says the school board may waive the nepotism rule for family members for the local superintendent. It does not say we waive it for, um, staff. We can waive it for, like we have for you, sir, in the past, but we cannot do that for staff. Um, that is above our, that is, we don't, we don't have the authority to do that. Um, but that is my recommendation, um, you, and of, and this is, I just want to bring to the point, too, that, you know, this is, um, something that we've learned, um, through our board trainings, and, um, um, Mr. President, I think that, that these are some of the things that you need to research before we get ourselves in a bind by violating a state law. And, and I, I will offer my assistance if you need, um, for me to assist you when these adjourned board agendas are being, um, approved, uh, because this is a serious one, we could get in big trouble for this, and again, like I said, it's against state law.
I think, uh, this issue, uh, is important, as the superintendent said, you know, school is starting, and the other thing is Joe Geen is not our attorney, keep that in mind. He never, uh, he represented the school on certain cases, but he's not the school attorney for the district.
Well, sir, you guys can vote for it if you want to, but I'm giving my concerns as, um, I've attended training and law conferences, and with also from Mr. Mitchell that has experience on further than, longer than I have. Um, Joe Geen is a very knowledgeable individual that knows the state statutes, um, so I, I believe him. So, on, like I said, I'm just voicing my concerns at this time, if you guys want to, I would recommend that you guys look into it, research it, learn, and then come back to us about it.
Yeah, I also went to the law conference, too, as you remember.
President Long, members of the board, if I can interject and clarify a little bit, I can, I think I understand what the issue is here. These were specifically meant to waive board policy, not state law, and I think with the addition and not having the policy in there and having the, the stated law is the issue. So, there was never an intention to waive state law, but the way it is written, I now understand a little bit clearer about why this, this came up. So, when I had some conversations earlier and understood what the issue was, the intention was not to waive law in any manner, although I do understand on F why that became an issue. It was to waive, there is a board policy regarding nepotism, and that was the specific board policy that I was asked, asking on G to be waived. And now that I see that the board policy was not specifically mentioned as far as the title of that, uh, and it says 22 dash five dash six instead of what that specific board policy number is, that is the issue. So, again, it was never an intention to waive law, uh, the intention was only to waive board policy, and so it was misrepresented in the minute, or in this, this agenda on F and G, so I just want to make sure I make that clarification. So, again, does that, does that help clear up a little bit of, of what happened, Mrs. Manuelito? If we were to change G so that it shows the specific board policy that is being waived and not the state law, which it shouldn't state, would that rectify the problem in, for you, or would you still prefer have it moved?
I still would like to have clarification, if you want to reach out to Mr. Geen, or if you want to reach out to our attorney, either one, because I don't feel comfortable, um, doing neither until it's researched and looked into, sir.
Okay, I guess we'll go ahead and leave off this issue from the agenda, and once again, Joe Geen is not our attorney.
We didn't say he was our attorney, sir.
Well, you're saying that we should ask him.
Well, he's very knowledgeable, I would ask him.
So, we'll go ahead and remove that from the agenda, and, um, it will come back on our agenda for the, uh, maybe the next meeting or until September. So, we'll be looking at that, and, uh, with those changes being made, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that, uh, we approve the agenda with the corrections made.
Okay, motion's been made, uh, roll call, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Um, yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Um, I think it's, um, the motion should be with the deletion of four F and G.
I think that's what was in Michael's motion.
Okay.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Okay, thank you for your help on this item. Let's go down to number three, approval of meeting minutes for May 30th, which was a special meeting, June 19th reconvene the meeting, July 10th, regular meeting. But it's a pleasure of the board.
President Long, members of the board, if I could make a quick interjection here with regards to the minutes, uh, there was some concern and investigation into one of the motions that took place on July 10th regarding the Open Meetings Act, or OMA for our district, I mean, and so I wanted to make sure there's a clarification in your packet. It still shows county meetings at four o'clock, that is inaccurate. County meetings along with city meetings will all start at six o'clock, and we will make that correction.
Okay. So, with that, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I would like to, um, go with the first, um, I have a concern on the first May, or June 30th meeting. I feel like I'm stretching. Um, I remember when we had the, um, Mrs. Gonzalez here for the, um, IDEA application, there was a comment that I made, and I would like to include that. I don't remember the exact wording I used, but I think it's, um, something that I would like to have in the minutes, and I commented something to the effect that the carryovers from the special education monies, um, was a huge deal to a director of, and, and was criticized for that carryover, and yet it's done again this past year, and nothing was, there was, it was okay to do. But if you want to look back at the tape and see what my exact comments were on that, um, or if you want to shorten it, um, but that was something that I know prior administration was very upset about, that there was carryover funds with special education. Um, so I would like to add that, and after, I mean, with that, I would like to, um, approve May 30th meeting minutes with that correction, please.
Okay, that will be made, so motion's been made, approve the meeting minutes with the correction recommended by Priscilla. Roll call?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Okay, uh, we have, um, okay, okay. Let's go down to item number four.
Wait, we still haven't done B and C, sir.
B and C?
Oh.
Okay. So, we, your motion was just pretty much May 30th?
Yes, sir.
Okay. June 19th, uh, reconvening the meeting, we haven't dealt with that, uh, meeting minutes, and then also July 10th, a regular meeting. But it's a pleasure of the board.
Um, again, can I have some clarification on 3B?
Okay, June 10th, you opened the meeting and closed the June 19th meeting. It wasn't approved because it was a reconvene meeting. At this meeting, you're approving the reconvene meeting and the irregular July 10th meeting.
So, is that supposed to be July 10th, Joan?
That's a reconvene meeting from June 10th. We recessed the meeting back in June, and we reopened it on July 10th.
Priscilla?
I s-
So-
It's supposed to be July 10th?
Reconvene.
July 10th?
Okay.
Okay, not June 19th?
It's the June 19th, it's carried it over to July 10th.
Okay.
July 10th, we reopened that meeting.
Okay.
And then have a regular-
Okay.
Here we go. So, according to-
So-
-what we got from Joan, uh, June 19th, that's, uh, the, the meeting that was recessed, and then, uh, July 10th is when we reconvene the meeting.
Okay, so, sir, the question, my follow-up question, since that clarification has been made, is where are June 19th reconvening minutes? No, it's not, ma'am. Uh, we have July 10th and July 10th. So, the date is supposed to be for June 19th, not July?
President Long, members of the board, we're just going to add July 10th onto the approval of the minutes, because there were two meetings to do one meeting. That's where the, the misunderstanding is. So, on the minutes, my suggestion is that we put July 10th, or June 19th slash, or and July 10th for the reconvene, I think that'll clear, that'll clear it up.
Is that okay now?
Yes, and I have, yes. I'll go ahead and motion to approve June 10th reconvene meeting.
July 10th.
I'm sorry, yeah. I was getting myself off-
June 19th, July 10th.
Yes.
Okay, motion's been made, roll call, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. We finally took care of our meeting minutes, thank you.
We still have one more, sir.
Is it one more?
July 10th.
July 10th, okay.
It'll have to be everyone.
We make a motion, we approve the July 10th meeting minutes.
Okay, motion's been made, roll call, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Um, I just want to make, again, clarifications that, um, 3D, Mike will be fixed?
Yes, Ms. Manuelito.
Thank you, in that case, yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Okay, we go to item number four, consent agenda. Questions, comments on items under consent agenda? Four A, four C?
Yes.
Four D, four E, four F?
Not F, not G.
No, F.
Oh, okay. Four G, not G, too, so four H.
With, uh, I would like to, um, also address a couple of things on here. Um, for, four C, and I talked to Mr. Hyatt about this, um, the NIEA is a very important conference, and I think that we need to, um, it's a National Indian Education Association conference, and we need our board members, um, to attend, and I would like to, um, request that that would be on, um, the agenda for the board members are available, that are available to attend that conference. The other thing I would like to say is on four E, um, you know, there's, there's, I don't think we should restrict just again to one board member, I think we need to continue to bring the vast amount of knowledge back to this district, um, so I would like to open that up also to any other board members that would like to attend. You guys have heard, um, a couple of us mentioned a couple of times about the stresses of dual credit, career readiness, and also, um, remedial classes in the colleges that our students are taking, uh, you know, I've mentioned it several times, that's something that I do, GED programs. Um, so, with, but those are the concerns that I have on that, on those, um, those are my comments, sir.
Okay. What we can do on, on this is, uh, under C2, and then also, uh, that's the one you were talking about, of course, and then E, uh, we can pull those from consent agenda items and discuss those.
Sir, you don't, we don't need to pull them, we can just open it, yeah.
Okay. So, if I, President Long, members of the board, if you could let me know of your interest, and I can put that on the next meeting.
Thank you. With that, our motion to approve the consent item agenda.
Good question. Motion's been made. Uh, roll call, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Okay, we've approved the consent agenda items. Let's go down to number five, study circle, and under that, A, public comment. Andrea Thomas?
Uh, good evening, Superintendent Mr. Hyatt, board members, and audience that are here. Um, on my public comment, I was gonna, um, address F and G, and my concern was just, um, opening in a can of worms for everybody in Gallup, McKinley County schools, and as far as you board members, you, when you handed in your application to be on this board, you should know your guidelines, your regulations, and what you can do and cannot do, so. And then, another thing new I'm gonna bring up is, um, I'm glad there's very few people here, I mean, um, it's not very comforting sitting in the audience, listening to you board members go back and forth. You all are up there for a reason, and you should know your policies, your state statutes and stuff across the board. You don't need to be going and arguing, going back and forth, that's not very professional. And then, as far as, um, heads up, um, probably be back here regarding the Tohachy schools and stuff, I came here straight from work and, um, get a, uh, to, I plan to be here at this board meeting, in every board meeting for the next three years, so, um, but I get a message at 11:47 this morning saying there's a meet and greet at Tohachy High School to meet the staff and coaches, you know? I don't appreciate unplanned stuff that come up when we parents already have a full day scheduled. So, right after I make my comment and stuff, I have to leave and race back to Tohachy to see what that's all about, and then to get text messages from my daughter and teammates saying, "What, what's going on with our bleachers?", you know? "What's going on with our floor? It's not clean." And then a few other messages from teachers and stuff that I do know very well from multiple schools, um, just to say thank you for the, uh, board members that did attend the, um, school, the teachers welcoming meeting and stuff, so. And then I also try to watch the video on the legislative, um, meetings that were going on for three days, and, um, thank you for the ones that were there in attendance, um, and I did see Priscilla and Kevin on there, so, thank you for being there. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. That's the only public comment. Now, we go to reports, uh, superintendent's report.
President Long, members of the boards, uh, thank you for giving me a little bit of time to, actually, we're gonna take a little bit more time than we usually do. In talking about some things that are happening in the district, first of all, I just want to congratulate our students, our parents, and staff for getting ready for this new school year. Uh, we're excited for it, uh, we've had some, some good growth, and we'll talk about that in a minute with respect to student scores as of late, you know, the PARC test, and the curriculum instruction department will give us some more information on that, but we, it's been, it's been good to celebrate some of the schools that have had some success. We appreciate the board members able to come, and those that couldn't make it, I'm sure there'll be some more celebrations when grades come out here in the near future. And I also wanted to, uh, before I, before I go any further, I wanted to mention that we had a teacher pass away this, this weekend, and his name was Tony, I think it's Bowland, Bowland, and he was hired in the district in 1979, uh, so he has served as a social studies and health teacher for many years, and so if, if it's okay with the board, if we could have a moment of- the board, if we could have a moment of silence, we'll reminisce. Yes. We also had a principal, uh, Ms. Mary Ann Sherman, who, um, had a serious medical illness that took her to Albuquerque this weekend also, so if you could keep her, her and her family in your prayers and thoughts. I wanted to talk about just a few items before we go on to some other things, um, one of, um, at the start of the year, we always take a moment to talk about recruitment, and we've talked about it for months, actually, about the things that are happening in the district, but I just wanted to touch on a few things with regarding recruitment for this school year. As I mentioned before, recruitment this season has been more difficult, and you'll see articles all over the United States where teacher shortages are growing, it's not getting better, and we felt that this year. For the past few years, we, we put a lot of effort into some initiatives, and started school with about, uh, seven, eight positions open, as far as teaching, scheduled teaching positions, and this year we have a few more, um, but I wanted to make mention of some of the positions we have open, maybe somebody out there who loves to watch board meetings that is a teacher and wants a job could, could apply as soon as possible, but, uh, I wanna make sure the board is informed. So at elementary, we actually had a lot of success, um, typically we do have a, quite a few special education openings, it's one of the harder areas to find teachers, so at the elementary level, we have three special education teacher openings, and right now, we only have one PE position. Usually PE is the easiest position to find, or social studies, or positions like that, but we actually, even last week, I think we had six PE positions open in the district. Today in elementary, we only have one, so that's a positive thing. Secondary's been our most difficult, uh, place to recruit, and last year it was more difficult to recruit in town than it was out of town, this year we've had a little less success out of town, um, compared to in town. So at the secondary level, uh, we have a band teacher that's open between Mi'amira and JFK, um, we have a family consumer science, usually another position that's not too difficult to fill, at Navarone Pine, Crown Point High School, we have an English position, these are all scheduled positions, Gallup Mid, PE again, Sagai is a difficult, has been very difficult this year, we still have a science, uh, English, and a math opening, and then through high school, I think we might have found a math teacher, but I have to double check, um, but as of, as of the weekend, we still had a math opening at through high school. So again, we still have some more work to do, and I just wanted to talk about one of the areas which we found the most success in recruiting, and I think that, uh, we will try to promote this again next year. We had our most effective strategy was using our own staff, uh, we offered, uh, an incentive to them if they referred and somebody was hired into our district, so, any staff member, uh, received a thousand dollars who referred, uh, or who, who, a teacher who they referred came to the district and will stay with the district all year. We had thirty-eight referrals that way, and, uh, we'll have more data for you at the next, or maybe the first meeting in September about all of those recruitment efforts, I wanted to make mention of that. Also, we just were awarded, uh, through the state of Mexico, it used to be called performance pay funds that we apply for, this, now, this year they've changed the name to four R, four R, as in just the regular R, the letter R, futures, and we got a little over one point two million dollars, and that is money that goes to teachers who score at a high, high rate on their teacher evaluation, and so we have to expend this money and give that money out to teachers before October thirty-first, and so this will be a nice back-to-school, um, reward, uh, incentive for those teachers who scored well last year. Sure. Yes, Priscilla?
Sorry. A couple of questions, please, or comments, my first one's a comment. Um, I'm really concerned about the math teacher at the Ru High, uh, just from speaking to a couple of my students and my own son, I think they need to see what they need to do with the students that did not have a math teacher last year also, and try to accommodate those students with a math teacher, and, because all they had was a long-term sub that did not know math, or were just given worksheets, or was assisted by another math teacher. Two years in a row of not having a math teacher for a student is gonna be critical, so I don't know what could be done, I, yes, I do wish that we do get a teacher, but if that is not gonna be the case, then they need to work it out to where the students that did not have a math teacher last year are placing a math, with a math teacher this year, because I cannot, it's gonna, we're, we're, we're not doing those students any good by not having them in a ma, with a math teacher again a second year.
Understand, President Long, Mrs. Manuelito, uh, we never want that situation, and we have some other options we're gonna look at if we can't, if we didn't, or we can't find somebody for some of these positions. Some of them are difficult, like I mentioned Sagai, it's hard to even share with other schools, 'cause there's no other schools out there, that makes it a little more difficult, but in Thiru, we might have some opportunities to share some teachers, uh, look at scheduling and see what we can do to accommodate that. We do, we've done everything we can to, to eliminate any positions that we can with respect to, if we have overages or not enough students, we can move some teachers around, and we still have potentially some flexibility to do that, so.
And I think for my, my other question is, can we please, um, when all the teacher incentives and their evaluations are given out on October thirtieth, I would like to, um, request for a list of those, um, I think that in a celebration here, um, with our teachers that did receive those, um, awards.
And the next item is a topic on transportation, and we are getting ready, as you recall, potentially, hopefully from last year, we, we got nine Jeeps that we were able to replace for our homeschool liaisons in the county area, and this year we plan to replace the rest of the homeschool liaison vehicles with, uh, four-wheel drive vehicles, so that we have better access to our parents in the rural areas, and, uh, good vehicles that people feel comfortable and safe in. And we're also, there's been obviously a big topic for years regarding, uh, especially as our bridges have failed around the county, and so we are also purchasing, even though we're not able to purchase Suburbans yet, 'cause we don't know the regulations from the PED, uh, as we looked at all the bridges and some of the upgrades that we found, uh, as of late, that we are going to also purchase four small buses that are able to make it in some significant areas where we can drastically reduce, uh, the inability to get to students across those bridges, and the four areas we're gonna initially target is Tofulakai Road, Johnson Road, Deer Springs, Mexican Springs, Blue Medicine Wells area, and the Sayato Chapter area, and so we will be purchasing those buses this fall, and then once we get the regulations, we'll be purchasing more Suburbans in order to help with the other areas. Um, and so we, we were able, as I mentioned to you, transportation, we're doing an analysis, um, from the highest priority to those areas where we would need Suburbans, and we were able to figure out that we could do some of the routes with, uh, buses because of the, because of the, the bridges, so we're excited about that, and so this is all part of a little bit of a, a spurt of vehicle replacement in addition, so that we can better meet our students' needs.
Mr. President, this, um, question, um, Superintendent, um, I know that we added a vocational class out in Tohachi, do you know what vocational class that will be taught out there yet?
Uh, um, President Long, Mr. Mitchell, I'd have to defer over to Mr. Bond if he has any information, if he doesn't, then I can, I can get it to you tomorrow. Um, from what I understand, those are all filled vocational, so I didn't see any of those on the board, so, but I can find out what they're specifically teaching, and they're sharing, the second position is a share between the middle school and the high school, and so I, I guess I, I'll throw that back in there if you don't mind me backtracking, we have added positions this year too, so, you know, some give and take with respect to recruitment, that we added special education positions, uh, we added four vocational positions in the county, and some others, and also we dramatically tried to increase our language and culture classes, and so those are the more difficult ones because of the requirements to get that license, it's just gonna take a few years to get all those filled, but we added, I think, a dozen or so, uh, positions in that area with regard to Zuni language, Spanish, and Navajo language classes, so. The, the final thing that I was gonna mention before we go on to our next, uh, report is tribal clothing, uh, I just wanted to make sure that the board was assured that we have met all of our obligations with res, with respect to making sure that we have names and backup even names, and maybe even backups to the backups, I don't know, but I know I signed a document yesterday, uh, for one of those backup situations on the behalf of the district, so that we have our elementary and middle schools covered with respect to contacts and information for tribal clothing for this year, so we hope.
That needs to be in the minutes. It's in recording, black and white.
It's, it's, yes, and, uh, no, I can assure, I signed a document yesterday regarding this issue, so I wanna make sure that you know that we are on top of that, uh, taking this seriously. Um, so we will go on to our, our boundary agreements, if you don't mind, President Long, if I, I start with that. So I, I gave you a copy of the four current, what we, what we call current boundary agreements, least ones that we're operating under, into your board packets at the very end in the back, and these are agreements between us and Grant School District, uh, Central Consolidated, and REMA, which is Grant's also, so, um, I brought these to you, and this is what I would like to do with respect to these agreements, is ask you for any changes that you might be interested in, and that's why I provided them to you. For me, when I look through these agreements, I'm pretty comfortable with all of it except for one area, some of the agreements have an end date, and according to state law, state rule, we do not need to have an end date, we can have just an open agreement, and any time either party, meaning either districts want, either district wants to make any changes, we can come back to the table and negotiate. So what I'd like to do, if, if it's okay with you, if you have any additions you'd like to add or changes, and again, we can put this on the next, next agenda if you'd like, to give you some more time, but from, the only change from me specifically is that we change and leave it open, open-ended, and then I will go to the other, uh, districts and, uh, start that negotiation process to see if we can get to the point where we can come to an agreement as soon as possible, and get these on file and renewed, and keep them current.
Mister Superintendent, Mr. Hyatt, if, when you leave them open-ended like that, does that mean, I mean, basically they just go on perpetuity, we don't have to approve them or look at them again?
Well, according to state rule, Mr. Mortensen, is the state, once we make a change, the state has to review it, okay? So anytime we could change, the state reviews it, other than that, we just, we just review them as a board each year, the other district reviews them with their board each year, and we can just let them go unless somebody wants to make a change. So if we do make a change, for example, the end date, I would have to take them back to the state, but then, the main language with regards to who can go where and pick up who with the transportation, there's no changes regarding that unless there's some issues that you might have.
Seems reasonable for me, just to.
Mister, um, Hyatt, excuse me, I'm sorry.
So?
Okay. Mister Hyatt, um, I think that's a, a good recommendation from you, sir, um, I know that this was also, um, a question that somebody had in one of our sessions, and I think if there's any changes that either party is, um, requesting, that it would be brought, um, to the board for those changes, other than that, um, I think it's a good, uh, recommendation to have these kind of agreements with an open, with a no-ending date, um, I think it'd be a lot more convenient for our district.
Any other comments, questions, board members? All right, uh, Mister, Mr. President Long, uh, the number three item is strategic session, which has been probably one of the most difficult dates to get together in, in, forever, with the, as, as a group. Do you have other questions?
Yeah, I didn't know why you were, I didn't know you were gonna move on. So the agreements that have not, that have been denied or not agreed upon, can you touch base on that and the agreement to be, um, established also, sir?
Sure, President Long, members of the board, Mrs. Manuelito, I, it was provided in your packets, a overview that was provided to the Indian Affairs Committee, and the first section of that, the current agreements on file are the one, are the ones that we just discussed, and the second section, it's agreements that have been denied or not agreed upon, and that's regarding, uh, the Baca chapter, or the Baca area, and also the Naxchiti area, and I, I believe the Baca one, the state said they were gonna deny that one, and so that one did not go through, um, the Naxchiti one, it was an issue between, that we couldn't have come to an agreement in the past from Central Consolidated and the Gallup McKinley County Schools, so, has there been any movement on those? No. Do you, as a board, want me to pursue those? Um, I'm open to doing that, I had thought about doing that anyways, because there had not been any movement on that in the past year or two, I think, uh, I know that we tried to get some legislation through that would help make those agreements easier for us, uh, they did not pass, and that might be another option we can, we can look at for the future in the legislative session. And at the end, I put agreements to be established, one of the areas which I think was, was also another area which we tried to get an agreement, from what I understand, at least verbally, for the Star Valley, which is north of Crown Point, you know, that area is closer to Crown Point High School, we send buses up to the, the border, and, uh, I believe Farmington School District sends, uh, they do the, we call it the route, I'm sorry, feeder route funds, uh, to pay for parents to take their students to Farmington. That's another area I'd like to pursue, uh, potentially, and looking to see if we can come to an agreement. And then the Window Rock Unified School District, we've been in talks with the state, we have a lot of questions regarding impact aid and the payment, tuition payment, that is a part of an agreement when you go across state lines, and so we have talked, uh, with the Superintendent from the Window Rock School District, and came out with a lot of questions, some on her end and some on our end, and so we've been weeding through those and talking with Paul Aguilar, uh, and also legislators regarding this particular agreement, which is complicated. After I understood a little bit better of what was involved, uh, it quickly became apparent that it's more complicated than just coming to an agreement, it may even, it potentially take legislation due to the laws and rules regarding transportation across state boundaries in Mexico, and there are similar laws in Arizona, so, a little bit of an overview.
Mister President?
Kevin.
Superintendent, you know, I would really like to see, um, some, some work or some continuation of work, um, for the Naxchiti, um, boundary agreement, um, to bus, you know, students from Naxchiti to Tohachi High School, um, I think that was a big issue, and, um, you know, we went to meeting after meeting, and all of a sudden it just came to a halt and that was it, so, um, I don't know, maybe looking, looking through that again as soon as we're at, but I know we had a lot of support from, um, District Fourteen, um, Naxchiti Chapter House, because now, they're the ones that started the resolution perhaps to the bus, um, so, I think that'd be worth the time.
Definitely, thank you.
Um, Mister Hyatt, on my comment, I, I need to research, um, the Baca, Baca's in my area, um, so I, I did have a Baca planning meeting today, uh, their meeting is on the night, I believe, sir, um, I don't know if there's you or a assistant superintendent that could attend that meeting, um, let me see, July, I'm already, August, August tenth at twelve o'clock is the Baca meeting, um, they are having some concerns and about, um, Indian education, but not with us, with the Grant School District.
About time. Not, not for Grants, but for us.
I know, I was sitting there, uh, with a big smile, but I did, um, I, I don't know if they, they are gonna, um, request some of our, how we worked it out, what we've done, um, but they, they would like, uh, I think it'd be good a conversation for somebody, one of our, um, somebody for administration to sit in on that, uh, they are, um, it is a big topic, it is a big concern, um, that they're bringing up on that to, to the, to the district there, um, there were comments made at the meeting, at the planning meeting, from parents saying that if they're not gonna work with us, we're tired of the discrimination from Grants, and, um, we have other schools that we can look into, like the Baca Doyaji Community School there in Pruitt, and also Gallup McKinley County Schools, um... there in Pruitt, and also Gallup McKinley County Schools. So those were music to my ears, but I didn't say anything or thought or jump up and down, I was just mainly sitting there. But I think that is something that, at least they know there's options that they can have with their children and going right across the street or coming back to our district.
What time is that?
At 12 o'clock. And I would really, I, my concern also is the same as Kevin's, with Star Valley and Window Rock, we went to countless meetings on those transportation issues in Santa Fe and Farmington and Window Rock and here with the Indian committee meetings with Santa Fe, I mean, the Santa Fe legislators. And I think that we need to continue to pursue those two and establish that agreement. I know the part that is difficult is the funding sources and the impact aid, but I think it's doable, and I know that it's still a discussion for, that, you know, we still need to work out with PD, and also, I know that Mr. Lotz is no longer in that position no more, but I think those contacts need to be made again to where we can work something out with the impact aids. I don't want those meetings that we've had in the past as to, and it did, like Kevin said, everything just stopped, you know, and I think we need to pick up that discussion and those conversations again for our kids.
President Long, Mrs. Manulito, I want to be careful, the sharing of information, working together has continued. I was reflecting on my, my experience or my knowledge of the situation. So the federal, the feds have been involved heavily in giving us recommendations, and we just recently, it took a while for them to get the recommendations back to us, and that's why we went back and met with Window Rock. They gave us some recommendations, and now we just have to work out one little item with regards to tuition payment. So there has been some movement, but yeah, it's not as fast as we'd like it. But again, I just got into the loop of that, and we're moving forward.
Are there any questions? Mike, on Baca, why was it denied? You know?
From what I understand is that the Baca area is closer to Thiru, and the, it's not as close to Grant, so I think it's a proximity issue, from what I understand.
I think that would be good to look at getting those agreements in place. I know Naxchiti's been a big issue. Students from there, they go to, I guess it is, and that's a long distance, so I think it would be good to see if we can have an agreement. And I know we talked about Window Rock. I guess it's a lot easier for us to accept students from Window Rock, but vice versa, it doesn't work.
It's both ways. We have to live in the state in order to claim them, so we can't accept theirs, they can't accept ours.
Just tell them we're going to move the state line.
President Long, I'll go on to number four.
Yes.
So this is another item that's been a long time coming with respect to a handbook regarding fundraising across the county, for Gallup McKinley County Schools, along with athletic handbook we brought to you last, last month. And so I want to turn the time over to Ms. Hanks to give you a overview of this handbook. We have provided you a copy, and we want to make sure that you understand some of the changes and the community understands some of the changes and how we're going to roll that out to the community also.
Mr. Hyatt, real quick, what was the outcome? Do we have a date yet for the strategic session?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. President Long, members of the board, we don't, but we're shooting for September. So me and Mr. Kylie are in works, and I've talked to some of you, and if some of you haven't, I haven't talked to you regarding September, what's open and what's not, if you could let me know. Mr. Kylie's getting back to us. His schedule is really heavy through August, and he has some window there, and so we want to do that in September. And we're fairly confident that we can make that happen.
Might make sense to start with what his open dates are and then?
Yeah, we're still waiting for him, but, yeah, I'm just going to run with it, and whoever shows up, shows up. If he can provide input or phone call.
I'll be there.
Yeah, I think I, Mike and I, we talked about it. I said, you know, let's just, whatever dates are available on Jeff's calendar, let's go with it. So if we continue to talk about agreeing on a certain date, that day will never come. So it's just best that we go with Mr. Kylie's schedule, open dates, and just schedule.
So with that, President Long, members of the board, we'll go on to the handbook unless there's other questions regarding those first items. Ms. Hanks.
President Long, members of the board, Superintendent Hyatt, members of the audience. The new fundraising, which we've called the GMCS Financial and Organizational Handbook for Fundraising incorporates both student activity funds and what can be deemed outside fundraising organizations such as booster clubs or parent-teacher associations. Essentially, neither of those handbooks have been updated since approximately 2005. And so what we did is we really looked across the state, we looked at best practices in accounting, we looked at various handbooks from other school sites, we incorporated NMAA policy and rule in order to make this a user-friendly but also transparent document. Within this process, what we've done for student activity funds, as many of you may be aware, is that each school site previously was actually doing the accounting for their own student activity funds. So we had 35 bank accounts, 35 accounting systems, and those were being monitored by the business office monthly, but we had no live data on a day-to-day basis. So what we've actually done is consolidated those into one bank account, and all of them will run through the Vision system so that we can monitor those on a daily basis, and reports can be printed, we can be very transparent about it. We've embedded within their targeted fundraising. Essentially, we want to be sure that people say at the very, what they're fundraising for. And then that way, there is no miscommunication with the community as to whom is raising funds and whom those funds will benefit. Because the primary concern of funds raised in the district are that the students who raise the funds should be the students who benefit from those funds that are raised, and we want to ensure that transparency. All transactions will be monitored by a member of the business office, and each one of them will go through for purchases, procurement, so they'll be reviewed for compliance with procurement. That's on the student activity fund side. For outside entities, we had a lot of input from Ben Chavez, who is our athletic director. We also worked with the guidance provided by the New Mexico State Auditor's Office and the New Mexico Attorney General's Office. And again, we went and surveyed lots of policies throughout the state of New Mexico. And what we hope we have done is provided a very transparent document that tells groups who organize kind of our responsibility and their responsibility. Because one of the things that we want to be sure of is transparency when we're talking about any funds raised on behalf of students. There's some increased guidelines for reporting, and that's so that for those outside organizations, I can bring to you on a regular basis information regarding how funds are raised, how they've been expended, all those types of issues. Previously, it was only required to have once a year. I am now requiring them to do it once a month so that I'm able to bring that to you as a board so that you can review that information. Again, the board should be able to review any transaction conducted on behalf of the school district. And we just really wanted to make it very, very clear what the expectations were from the district, and then also what the responsibilities were on each side. And I'm open to any questions or comments about the document.
Board members? Mr. Long?
Yes. First of all, I would like to say, I know this is a lot of work, Giovanna. Thank you so much, and to the business office for doing this. This has been a hot topic for years, and of course, with the transition made a couple of years ago on booster clubs, it was even bigger. And I thank you for researching the best practices of other district, and of course, also the state procurement office, getting advice from that. I'll cross my fingers that it worked smoothly. I know we'll probably have a few glitches, but I just want to thank you for all this because it looks, I think, a lot of work was put into this, so thank you very much.
Ms. Manulito, I do appreciate your kind words, and I can definitely say I did not do it alone. I have a great team that I work with, and Mr. Chavez from the athletics department, he was definitely essential in helping me to make sure there was compliance with NMAA.
Yes, I did meet with him before in this, when we, and I was very glad, about, I think, two months ago when I stopped by, that, you know, we did discuss the booster club and, you know, the different fundraising and, you know, donations brought in from outside entities like Girlies and Birth Financial, and I think those were.
I was just worried, concerned, had a concern on, like, donations, that has nothing to do with this?
Sure, so I would like to just give a fair warning. I will be bringing likely to the next meeting some information on revising donation. I definitely, for those who would like to contribute to the school district, I don't want to discourage that in any way, but I want to make it a very transparent process so that everybody knows what can be done and then what reporting is required.
Okay, thank you.
President Long, members of the board, our current policy is, it's overly strict. We just need to do some clarification so that if somebody brings in a cupcake and wants to give it, everybody can sleep at night, so without worrying about the policy.
Thank you, Giovanna. Good job.
Thank you so much, members of the board, President Long, Superintendent Hyatt.
Thank you for coming in. We go to the next one?
Number five. President Long, members of the board, our next item is a presentation from our curriculum instruction team regarding the park results. Again, we have not received school grades. Those should be out this week, but you never know why they, why they crunched that data for us. But we were given, and I provided some to you, information and statistics and information regarding our scores from the park test. And Mr. Gerald Horasik will go over the packet which you received, the presentation. So we just, we just crunched these numbers, so this packet is new to you, but we're going to go over every slide, so turn the time over to him.
Gerald? President Long, members of the board, Superintendent Hyatt, members of the audience. First thing I want to do before we get into the data is I want to just introduce the curriculum instruction assessment team that's here this evening. So we have, and I gave you a list of our directors of instruction. It has who they are, Charles has it, and each one of you have those, and what schools they cover. So if you have questions about schools in your area, you'll know which director of instruction covers those schools. And so those directors of instruction are Rachel Rodriguez, give us a nice wave, Rachel, Carrie Labato, and Wade Bell. Oh, it is his birthday today, yes. And how old are you today, Wade? Forty-two and proud.
You don't look a day over 26.
So that's why we had some good snacks.
Where's the cake? Where's the cake?
All by yourself? Oh, okay. And then we have a director of curriculum and assessment, and that's Michael Kubaku, was at Crown Point Mid School last year as the principal. And then we have coordinator of assessment and data, Ashley Ryan. And we have the coordinator of early childhood education, and that's Shannon McFarland. And I want you to know that everyone is new, because this is a new department with some, we didn't add any positions, we kind of restructured. Everyone is new except for Ashley. And Ashley was the coordinator of assessment last year, we added the data title to that. And I'm kind of going to go over what some of them do on a daily basis, but I do want to share with you that it's a really strong team that's going to really support children. And the work we do, we make mistakes, and we try to make the situation better, and we do some things really well, but it's a combination of both. But at the end of the day, I can assure you that every person there and myself, it's really about how, what can we do for students academically, behavior-wise, et cetera, to just help move them forward, to help them become productive citizens. It's our obligation. So the directors of instruction, and that's once again Rachel, Carrie, and Wade, they're really focused on getting into schools on a weekly basis and working with principals to just help make them instructional leaders. And some of the things they do with their principals are, they coach principals on how to do observations in classrooms, and then have really good feedback with teachers to help make the teacher better. The other, something else they do is they have structured collaboration meetings to help principals have conversations with teachers around student achievement, PBIS in schools, that's a behavioral system that you can implement, and it really does work, it's really effective. They help principals structure those, they also help principals train teachers on improving instructional strategies in all subject areas, so not just reading and math, but it's school-wide. PE, Navajo language and culture, art, music, et cetera, vocational, they try to train everyone to just do good things for students strategy-wise. So that's what the directors of instruction do. Michael's the director of curriculum and assessment, and really what we're doing with curriculum and assessment, I want to share with you is, and I've talked about this briefly before, but we give an interim assessment that is not tied to teacher evaluation three times a year, after quarter one, quarter two, and quarter three. And we are really putting a lot of effort into making sure that, we call it an interim assessment, that it actually tests what the kids should have learned during that quarter, that nine-week period. Because last year we had some misalignment. And this year, I can assure you that we are going to be aligned. The questions on the test will match what the kids should have learned during that time, and it will be modeled after the park that they take in the spring. And we have a district-wide curriculum that we created, and it's really pretty powerful, and I want to share with you why. You have a question? Yes, go ahead.
So this newest assessment, is it additional to the other assessments we have?
No.
Because my, one of my biggest concerns is just adding more assessments to an already, our kids are already bombarded by assessments, and we're adding more assessments to them?
We are not. So in the past, we've always given interims, it was with a different company. It was called the Learning Institute, TLI. They went out of business. So what we did as a district is we went out to RFP, and we contracted with SchoolNet, it's a Pearson company, so it is not adding, it is not adding an assessment. It is replacing the company, TLI, and we have really been able to gain control of what that assessment's going to look like. So when I sit here and tell you that it will be aligned, it will, if it's not, it falls on me specifically and my department if it's not. So it's not adding an assessment.
No, but we didn't take away, we didn't take one away either, we just replaced it.
We did, right, we did. But let me just tell you though, one of the things we did get from principals and teachers is though, it needs to be better aligned, and so that's our mission, is have the assessment aligned to the curriculum that they should have been taught.
The other question I have before you really got started into is, like, why is Thiru under, oh gosh, Labato, what did I say? Okay. And then Thiru Elementary and Thiru Mid are under Rodriguez. Wouldn't they all be under, I'm, just asking?
Right, so we, this is, so we strategically gave Carrie a majority of the high schools because she has the most secondary experience of our three DI's. But there's more than 11, so we couldn't give her every mid-school and high school, so that's part of the reason why you see that she has Thiru High, but Rachel has, you said, Thiru Elementary and Thiru Mid.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
That's part of the reason why. And I think part of that is Rachel had those schools last year. Right. But we did strategically address specifically Carrie because she has the most secondary experience.
Thank you for the clarification.
And so, once again, I just really want to stress, we also created a district-wide curriculum that, as an example, in third-grade ELA, all third-grade ELA teachers should be teaching the same, should be teaching the same content as any other third-grade class. And then we assess what those standards were, and what's really neat about our curriculum is you can just click on one button for a standard, and it gives you is you can just click on one button for a standard, and it gives you everything that teacher really needs to teach that class. Um, so it's a pretty powerful, a lot of good feedback from principals and teachers on that, and we're just rolling that out this year. So it's a year-long process for training.
And so, is, but isn't that common core?
It is.
Okay.
But it, it's common core standards, but we, we with teacher feedback, we sequence them in a particular way, so this is taught this quarter, then the next piece is taught the next quarter. But it's all common course, just sequenced to better than we, I think we've had it sequenced in the past. We got a lot of input from teachers on how to adjust that.
Okay.
So I do also want to be clear that when we do things, we just don't go and do them, we get a lot of input from principals and teachers to make adjustments.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Uh, and I, I have to confess, I skipped ahead a page or two in the, in the evaluations, and I have a question for you. So the, this curriculum streamlining and things like that and standardization makes a ton of sense, you know, it's a lot more data-driven, and I, I think that, I think it makes, makes a lot of sense, but what non-curriculum factors do you think there are, and is there anything, you know, we can do about those to address them that, you know, that contributes to our kids being, you know, consistently like ten points behind a, a lot of the, you know, by the rest of the state?
Thanks for tossing that one back to me, Mr. Horasik.
I have a feeling you're gonna pay for that tomorrow.
Well, I mean, I think there's a lot of, we talked about curriculum, we also talked about assessment. Anything in curriculum instruction is obviously an important piece, you want to get that as efficient and streamlined as possible. Uh, statistics show, or dat research shows that that is one of the best things you can do to move any student forward, whether they are from a poverty, or whether they're rich, or in the middle, or whatever you want to call it, whatever demographics they come from. And so, part of it's that, and then there's probably about a hundred other issues that probably have come into play. Sometimes it has to do with funding, sometimes it has to do with some of the hoops we have to jump through, uh, sometimes it has to do with school, school boards, no, I'm just kidding. Um, there's things that you guys can do too, though, with respect to just, I guess for me, what I think is, as long as we're being transparent and showing you what we're doing, giving us that, that trust that we know how to move students forward, and try, do our best to make sure that we are supporting our teachers and staff at school sites so that they have the resources and tools they need in that classroom, face-to-face setting with those students. Um, so I, you know, there's lots of things, we could probably go on and on about lots of different little pieces to education that affect that indirectly, but uh, a few things.
And I'll go into what we're, what we feel like a piece of what the district has been missing to address the lower proficiency scores. We really feel like not having a truly aligned assessment, the interim, because, because last year, we were, at times, we were assessing things that weren't taught. That doesn't give teachers good data. How do you help a student who just took a test on a standard that they've never learned?
So we're gonna teach, we're gonna teach to the test more?
Teaching skills to just help them be more successful, and, and that's an interesting point about teaching to the test, if you look at our curriculum and the way we created it, it really does provide a lot of real-world problems to help the students be successful in those.
What's your, what's your gut feeling with, when we, you know, make these changes with our curriculum, what, what's your gut feeling that it's going to do to these, these, uh, you know, these evaluations?
I, I think over time, because I, there's no silver bullet, there's no magic whatever, but over time, if we really stay aligned and really provide support with our team through the DI's and the curriculum department assessment, we can over time increase proficiency scores. And so, I, I think with that, I'm gonna move into the presentation, and you can see in the presentation where we've made some tremendous strides in growth in ELA and math, knowing we have a long, long way to go. Um, and I do want you to know with the presentation, I picked out the highlights and the good points. We have plenty of schools that dropped in some areas and that struggled, but I really wanted to focus on the really powerful growth that we've had. And I really went back just a year, so I went to, from 2016 to the most recent scores we just got for last school year to show you what we've done over basically a two-year period. Okay? And so, this is in your packet, and I know you just got your packets tonight, so I'm gonna kind of take you through what's on the board, but I do want to show, this is a district-to-state comparison of what just happened from sixteen to seventeen, and I'm gonna draw on this and show you that the two dark blue, that's the district overall ELA for grades three through eleven, we grew two-point-three percent. The state grew one percent. So what that tells us is we grew one-point-three percentage points more than the state. So what that tells you is overall, we're doing some pretty good things if we can beat the state average, um, overall in proficiency. And that's in ELA. And then we go to math, and if you look at what we did overall in grades three through eleven, we grew point-six, we grew point-six percent, so it's less than one percent, but the state actually dropped point-two percent. Is that correct? Am I doing that right?
Yes.
Point-six, point-two, so we actually grew about point-eight percent, a little less than a percent. So we know in ELA and math overall, though, we're doing some good things in the classroom, um, because we are growing at a faster rate than the state. So, and Mike, Superintendent Hyatt likes to use this term, we're closing that gap academically for students in our district.
Do you have any idea, just off the top of your head, like where New Mexico is nationally with, with some of these types of things?
Pretty low.
Pretty low?
I can't, I've, I've heard forty-six, I've heard forty-eight.
I've heard forty-six.
Yeah, so it's, it's relatively consistently in the bottom five or six.
Okay.
It is.
Although I would add that they take different tests. So this test that we're taking, the park test is much more difficult, and only about seven to nine, maybe eleven states take that test.
Four.
It's much more difficult than most states' tests. So, you see, if we were taking the same test, the NISBA test that we were taking three, four years ago, our students would be much higher proficient, higher proficiency rates on that test compared to this test, which is two grade levels higher than that test. So it's, it's difficult to compare, especially state to state, or even country to country at times. We have to compare ourselves against, uh, you know, apples to apples and the state average, and uh, so.
I'm thrilled to death to see growth. I mean, that, that, I mean, that's a, that's a big thing, no matter where, you know, no matter where we're at, we're moving, I mean, moving in a positive direction, and I think that's important. Are there goals for these growth rates?
For us to like have a district benchmark?
Yep. Is there like?
No, and that's something we need to do as a department, because that's one of the pushes when we talk about turnaround that is important to do, so at some point we have to do that as a district and say, this is how much we want to grow.
Sure.
Or grade level as a district.
Well, it's a logical step. I mean, anything worth doing is worth measuring, which we're doing, and anything worth measuring is worth setting goals over to, you know, to achieve.
Yeah, it's interesting you said that, because like I said, there's always areas to improve. We make school setting percentage growth, we do. Um, and we make it bold, whether it's ten percent or fifteen percent in ELA by grade level, so we really need to do that as a, as a district, no question about it. Okay, so now I'm gonna go through some data, there's about sixteen slides, but I, I want to be clear on the top. The first set we're gonna go through is district versus the state, same grade level, different students, and I'll explain what that means. We're just looking at third graders from last year to this year, but that's different kids, because last year's third graders are now fourth graders. Does that make sense? So the first bit of data, we're just looking at what did third grade do, different kids, probably the same teachers, but different kids. And so if you look at what we did in third-grade math in one year as a district, we grew six percent, the state grew only point-two, so we beat the state average by five-point-eight percent. That is huge, that's significant. So it simply means, again, we have closed the gap in third-grade math significantly. And it doesn't mean we didn't close it in third-grade ELA, I just wanted to show the really strong points of what we did well.
Is this new statistical analysis that you're using, is it gonna, you know, I mean, the growth is awesome, is it gonna show us why, why we're growing, what we're doing better? I mean, are we, do we have better teachers? Do we have better students? Are we spending more money? Are we spending less money? Are we having longer recesses, or, you know, like, what is it exactly you think that contributes to these?
This is only my third year in the district, so I don't, I, I'm, I'm not from the area, I'm from Grants, and I drive in. What I can tell you is, it's everything you mentioned, it's the way business has funded schools, it's the way they reallocated money to Mill, et cetera, for principals to, you know, purchase things for teachers, it's buying school supplies for your students. That's huge, that all helps. Um, it's the way schools, who they can contact at central office and personnel, they used to be a different person all the time, so they got different answers, and over the last two or three years, they go to a specific person all the time, or a specific school. That has a huge contribution to, um, the success that happens. So it's all the above that you mentioned.
I, I would like to say, I think I want Mr. Mortensen to eat some more, something's in that barbecue sauce.
Can't be cute.
He's asking some fabulous questions, thank you.
It's the ranch stressing.
A lot of, yes, this is awesome, thank you, because they're the same questions that we're all kind of, that I was thinking about, I think those are fabulous questions and, um...
So am I giving good answers, or I didn't do any to eat more barbecue?
You should, go eat some more barbecue.
But, but it, it is a combination of all that that, um, helps make everyone more successful. So now, so that was elementary, this is mid-school, once again, it's different kids, same grade level. We grew three percent in ELA, the state grew point-six, so we outpaced the state, outpaced the state average by two-point-four percent. Look at seventh-grade ELA, as a district, we grew nine percent, and the state grew three-point-one, so we outpaced the state by five-point-nine percent. That's huge. Uh, and that really means you're doing some really good things in the classroom, because these are not accidents. The growth is, um, we're just becoming more targeted and providing better professional development for our principals and for our teachers.
And I, and I know it was mentioned, I think Mr. Hyatt or Mr. Rurski, Rurski, whatever, the state secretary, um, mentioned that this year's park was even more harder, was that a word, or?
I think it was the same rigor level, I believe, but for some reason, in math specifically, the state didn't grow and we did, so, um, I don't know, I didn't hear that the, the test was any different, I don't know.
He just said it's an incredibly rigorous assessment, for sure, it's very hard. And that's another thing, you have to give credit to everyone in the district, and principals and teachers, um, they have the same expectations for all students, and we want to challenge all of our students to, to get better, and that's really powerful, because you don't always see that. Um, the next one is still different students, seventh-grade math, the district grew three percent, the state actually dropped point-six, so we actually outpaced the state by three-point-six percent. So once again, it's pretty powerful, when you grow as a district in seventh-grade math and the state actually went down. Um, okay? So now we do high school, once again, it's different students, so it's just grade levels. We grew six percent, this one's pretty good too, look at this, growth was six percent in ELA, eleventh grade, the state actually had a negative one-point-six, so we outpaced them by seven-point-six. Tenth-grade math, I did ELA math on the same slide, the same space, we grew four percent, state growth was point-nine, so we outpaced the state by three-point-one percent in tenth-grade math. Now, we're gonna switch the type of kid we follow. So this is elementary, but it's cohort. So what it means is, um, when we look at fourth to fifth grade, these are technically the same students in the entire district, so all of our fourth-grade students have became fifth graders, we're tracking them now as cohort, and this is really the most powerful data. Now, keep in mind, some kids left, some kids came in, so it's not a hundred percent the same kids, but in general, it's, the majority are the same kids. And so for us, I, I just put this up to, to show you that, um, even though we didn't outpace the state by a lot, we still grew five percent in fourth to fifth-grade ELA, significant. The state grew four-point-one, so we were just a little bit under one percent above, but that's still pretty powerful growth for us. And so what this says is, it's not necessarily the teacher, but it's the student and the type of training that is being provided for those teachers. Okay? Now, this is mid-school, same kids going from sixth to seventh grade in ELA and seventh to eighth grade, and I want to share again, just look at what the district did. We grew eight percent from sixth grade to seventh grade, and the mid-school ELA, seventh to eighth, we grew seven percent, and we outpaced the state average on both, um, by quite a bit in sixth grade and by a smaller percentage in seventh to eighth grade. Okay, now, what I want to do is, I'm not gonna go through all the numbers, I just want you to see them, and you can look at the schools that come from your area, but this is, um, cohort data, just looking at district growth, no more looking at the state, but just look at all of the schools that grew four percent up to thirteen percent. So at Jefferson, their kids that were in third grade went to fourth grade, they grew thirteen percent. And I can tell you what the typical growth rate is nationwide, it's about one to two percent per year if you track a student. So this is incredible growth in all those schools. Um, so there's two, four, seven schools grew by quite a bit in their proficiency rates, so once again, same kids, elementary in ELA math. And then, look at the number of schools in fourth to fifth grade in ELA math, that's every school that grew, Jefferson, twenty-five percent, Catherine Miller, nine percent, Crown Point Al, nine percent, Red Rock, eight, Ramal, fourteen, Tohatchie, six percent. That's ten of our nineteen schools, because there was nineteen elementaries last year, it's eighteen now, ten of our nineteen, look at their gains, just significant, um, growth from fourth to fifth-grade ELA. And you know what I like about that slide also, is it represents the entire county. So it's, it's, it's all over the place, good things are happening. And then this is third to fourth-grade math, and once again, I think Mr. Hyatt alluded to the fact that, just as a state, we struggled more in math than as a district, but we still had some good growth. At Lincoln, third to fourth grade, Onyate, and David Skeet. And then fourth to fifth grade, there's a larger number of schools that had some significant growth, just really over a one-year period.
I have another quick question.
Sure.
Um, so this data that, that we have, it sounds like, I mean, you don't have it on here, but you have it down to the school, you also have it down to the, you know, the teacher, or, or any of that kind of stuff?
An individual by individual student, yes.
What is done for, uh, teachers that are, you know, just killing it?
So, yeah, so I think, um...
Yeah, the money I talked about earlier, the one-point-two million is a grant we got from the state to pay out for those teachers that perform well.
And so that, I mean, that just goes straight to their bottom line, to the teachers?
Straight to the pocket, yeah, just goes straight to them. What's, what are the, what are the amounts?
That's awesome. I mean, we'd love to see some of these teachers here and make them famous, I mean, that, I, it's a big, it's a big thing, and it's a, boots on the ground. Likewise, uh, what's being done with teachers that are not killing it?
It's a personnel matter that we have to decide individually for those employees. So if it, if a, sometimes, there's lots of different factors in that, so sometimes it could be because we're not providing, our instructional leaders aren't providing the support they need, or we don't have the system in place at that school, or in that grade level, or, there's lots of different factors. It could be, it could be a poor-performing teacher.
Sure.
Or it could be that we're not doing enough to support them, and so, that's why we ramp up those efforts by better support, so we can tell whether it's us or them.
And I'll speak to some of the PD we do for them. Um, and so we, we feel like, in the past, our model's been eighty percent management for a principal and twenty percent instruction, and our goal really is to flip that to eighty percent instruction, twenty percent management. But I can tell you that, um, we provide a lot of live coaching in the classroom for teachers, it's a company called Empower that comes in and does it, but they actually go in and they observe the teacher do a lesson with our curriculum, and they watch what takes place, and then after that actual class period, that teacher sits with that coach, and they have dialogue about what went well, where you struggled, and here's some strategy to help make you better. So it's a live, on-the-spot coaching that really helps, um, improve education for students, with the student always in mind. So th- those things are pretty powerful, and even the way we look at data, on Data Days, most schools do it weekly, and we have a set time also, once a quarter, but those conversations around grade levels by fifth grade, fourth grade, or even third, fourth, and fifth together, talking about strategies and ways to help each other out, especially your minimum talking about strategies and ways to help each other out, especially your minimally effective or ineffective teachers.
Are there any, uh, you know, targeted, targeted growth rates that you're, you know, that you're wanting to see, or you don't want to see anybody get below this rate, or something?
Our targeted rate is about, what do we push schools to grow? About ten percent on the park, minimum of ten percent on the park. And then what they do is, principals can have site goals with their teachers. Maybe a teacher wants to grow their kids this month on the interim assessment, or this month on the park. And we, and they actually even try to get down to where they give, they let the kid pick a goal of how much better they want to do. So it gives some ownership to that student, um, to strive to be more successful. And believe it or not, kindergartners, third graders, eighth graders, they really like that, and they appreciate that, because it gives them a tangible goal, that I want to do this to be more successful.
Need to pick up the pace a little bit, so we can...
I'm just following your orders, sir.
I'm just giving, I'm giving you my orders.
So, um, I can just skip through and get to the, um, I just want to talk about the last two slides. This is, and Carrie, if I misspeak, you can correct me, but this number is simply, you have students in mid-schools that take high school level math courses. It's the second to last slide on your sheet in your packet. So you have students who take Algebra I, as an example, at the mid-school, and then they take the part test for eighth graders. So at Gallup Mid, you had a group of students that took Algebra I, and this is how much they grew in one year on the part test. It's amazing. Thirty-eight.
It should be noted, too, that Ms. Lovato was the principal at Gallup Middle School there.
You bet. That's right.
That gigantic growth rate.
And then our other school that did it was Through Middle, who in a similar situation had significant growth. And then just the last slide, if you go over the last year, um, there were two hundred and three additional students in the GMCS schools that are proficient. That's a significant accomplishment, um, for our district.
A question that I got one time, um, last week was, the, well, I said seven hundred, because my, what was that seven hundred number you gave?
Over the last few years, we have seven hundred and nine students total more proficient.
Okay. Um, I said seven, kinda the same, I didn't know the exact number. I said over seven hundred students, um, are now proficient in the last two years. And the, the parent came back to me, or asked a question, and said, "That's not even like, it's almost one percent of our district." But I, the answer I gave her was, "But not all our students take the test." I mean, they're like, the, the grades that we're on, they're third grade, eleventh grade, eighth, seventh grade. Those are the ones that take that test. So that, that's the way I kinda told her. It's not like the whole district takes it, takes that part test. Uh, so that's where we're, but then I, of course, told her, "I don't care if it's one child that went proficient, you know, that advanced, that made an increase. That's worth celebrating." I mean, we should be celebrating every growth that a child succeeds, so I just wanted to mention that also. Um, the other thing, uh, my last comment would be on this is, you know, I, I strongly believe this is kind of our foundation that we're starting a little late. Um, the house is built, but I think we're trying to rebuild our foundation with this curriculum and with the staff that you have. And I think more positive things are gonna come out of this. And I, I like the enthusiasm. I like the, um, I mean, Mr. Bell has enough for all of you guys, but I think, um, he's always smiling and, um, bringing a positive atmosphere everywhere. But I think one thing is that this is gonna be great, and I think that we're gonna see a lot more, um, wonderful things coming out of this curriculum, um, instructional, new, new way we're going with this, so... And, and thank you, um, Mr. Hyatt. I think this was something you mentioned to us when, when we first brought you, um, on board as a superintendent, that this was your vision, and this was something that you wanted, you saw some things you wanted to change within the district. And, um, I think this is a good thing, um, you know, for me as a board member, I, I really value this, so thank you for that.
I just want to close with this. It is a great team, and the bottom line is, if you, you allowing the restructuring to take place as a board was significant, and we appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, Gerald, and your team. Good job. Uh, members of the board, President Long, um, that concludes our report. Um, if I could just add one little last-minute tick to this presentation, is we have more data to come. We have school grades coming out. We'll have more discussions regarding the data, and we may even, if we have time, go over some more of these slides. But I don't want to give any sense that we are satisfied with this kind of growth, because we know that we can do better than that. Um, we're learning more, we're learning faster, we're learning from our mistakes. And some of the things, we know that we're, we know that we're on the right track, and we'll become more efficient and better for our students.
Thank you, Mike. Now we go to board report. Any report from board members?
Um, Mr. President, um, I would just like to say that I did attend the ELC, um, meeting in Church Rock. And I think, um, Mr. Hyatt, superintendent, and his staff did a very good presentation. And they did a great, a great job, and I would like everyone to know that. Um, I also attended, um, our principal orientation here, as well as the teacher orientation. And then I went to the Gallup Mid School for the, um, pet celebration, um, for their award. Um, so I would, and I would also like to thank, you know, SFE for, um, for doing the food. I believe they were at Church Rock, and I think they fed our teachers and our principals as well. And then tonight again, so I'd like to thank them for all their work. Um, and then, another thing I saw in the Gallup Sun was, um, our superintendent's letter. And I think that was, um, a great letter, and a good way to get it out there to the people. And, um, just, everything you wrote was very good. So I appreciated that. Thank you.
The other reports?
Oh, I also went to the Kyoto Canyon Chapter Meeting, um, with our superintendent. Um, and this was just to clarify, um, you know, we just gave a short report of, um, our legal budget and how all of that works. And they were very, um, pleased to hear it, and they, um, were unaware of, um, the actual process, but now they know.
Thank you. Um, I would like to first say, um, we're thinking, and I'm thinking, of Mrs. Bowman. Um, last week, our, the superintendent for, um, Central Consolidated was hit by a drunk driver, her and a staff member, um, was hit by a drunk driver in Shiprock area. So I just wanted to say, hopefully they're, they're doing better, um, this week. Um, so reaching out to her, and please remember her also in prayer, um, just like we have another staff member here. Um, I attended a lot of events. Um, I think it's very vital that our board continues to be involved. Um, there was the, the breakfast that we sponsored here as board members, um, for the new administration training. Um, that was really nice. It was full. There was a lot of, um, discussion happening, and a lot of great, um, activities. Even Mr. Andy Sanchez came out to do a presentation for our administrators. Um, you know, thank you. Um, I think, I don't know if, if we haven't sent a thank you letter. I think a thank you letter should be sent out to, um, the presenters that presented, um, and did a phenomenal job. Um, the other thing that we went to was the New Mexico School Board Leadership Retreat in Loudcroft. Um, again, it wasn't disappointing. Those, that was very, a very well, um, meeting. We went for the executive, um, Board of Directors, um, the day before the actual conference or retreat. And there was a lot of discussion on how, um, new board members, um, play a role into coming on, uh, onto the board, and what training is needed, and how essential those trainings are. The communication between, um, superintendent and the board, and what we need to do as, um, Board of Directors for the State of New Mexico School Board Association to assist, um, coming, our new board members. And there was, there's a lot of different, um, topics that was discussed, um, a lot of different things that, um, there's a lot of concerns with, um, veteran school board members, um, and new school board members, with, with new school board members. Um, but I think that those coming up trainings, the one that's coming up with the New, uh, New Mexico School Board Association, uh, we're gonna target three specific areas, um, that we discussed there, that the leaders, um, would like to, um, present to the, the rest of the body of the school board membership. We, uh, Mr. Hyatt, thank you for attending the Yamboto Chapter Meeting with me. Um, I think we had a wonderful presentation with, um, the youth there, that the summer youth program. And I know some of them went to Wingate, but I think it's nice to see. Again, I got feedback from the, um, officials there saying it's nice to have the superintendent come out to the chapter and not just the principal, but we did take the initiative that the superintendent, um, came out. Um, July twentieth, um, I wish more of our staff, um, in our district would attended, would have, or could have attended the domestic violence and sexual assault training that happened over here at JFK. Um, it was a very valuable, um, training that I think even if we, um, get in touch with them again, um, I think the person that oversaw that, um, was Mrs. Representative Wanda Johnson. And the presentations that were there targeted a lot of our youth. There was teen dating and teen violence. Um, there was a healing circle that was very beneficial to a lot of, um, the, um, participants there. So I think if we could, if we, I would really like to request to have something like that brought again, um, in this area, because it's a hot, it's a good topic to start discussing. Our Navajo Nation just passed, um, another law that, um, or amended a law with human trafficking and sexual assault. Um, and I think that's, we need to know more about that in our area, um, for our students also. Um, as Kevin mentioned, on July twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth, I attended, uh, we've both attended two days of the, um, Legislative Education Study Committee with our senators and representatives that were present. Uh, again, thank you for the report from your, um, um, assistant superintendent and yourself, Mr. Hyatt. Uh, it was very beneficial, and you guys really, um, portrayed our district very well. And the successes that we're having here, I think, um, everybody was very impressed with the changes that are happening and what has happened in the past with this district with, um, the increasement. And I think one that I know they're kind of interested in was the incentives that we're giving out, um, to our staff, and then also the, um, recruitment incentives, like the rent. I know that was something that they were kinda, "How are you guys doing that?" kinda question. But I think that's a way to entice a lot of the people that are coming here. Um, the Root Chapter Meeting was the other day. Um, I gave you the, August thirteenth is the next meeting for that. The new teacher orientation, um, it was nice to see our former school board member, Mr. Manini, there, wearing his I Am Public Education shirt, um, walking around. Um, that was really good to see him there, and it was a good orientation for the neat, new teachers. Um, and a lot of the booths were awesome. I think that, that really helped them a lot. And I think they really, just the little comments I heard and sitting from the different tables. I think the online, um, I don't know if you want registration, or online process was a lot easier, they were saying, than doing everything by, you know, I think that was really good, that, the way, the way you guys offered that. Um, the PED press conference was, um, uh, I attended both here at mid-school and at Toby Turpin. Um, and that, I, I'm very thankful that I did, because I did learn a lot, too. Um, and just seeing the faces of the students, um, was something, was a big accomplishment for them. The other recommendation that I would like to attend, I was invited out to Crown Point, um, last week, to the Elder and Youth Summit that they had up there. And I think it's a valuable program that they're having, um, and, you know, they had their, um, in Navajo Technical University, radio station out on live remote, and I did an, I did an interview with them up there. But I think the comment that I made was, this is really essential of that what they're trying to do, um, through the building communities of hope through our Navajo Nation, is bridging that gap between our elders and our youth. Um, it's something that, um, is broken right now, um, that we're having, not, not completely broken, but it's challenging, because our youth don't understand our elders anymore. Their communication is broken, um, to where we sometimes don't understand our, our grandparents. And I think that was a good summit that they had. Um, but yeah, those are the places I went. And I enjoyed every single one of them, because, um, it's for our children. And I know we don't get, um, we don't get a reimbursement or anything, but I think if we continue to put our heart where we say that we're dedicating ourselves to, uh, we get more out of it than financially. So, I just want to say thank you for everything that you guys do for the district in making it to where you guys contact me to say, "Hey, this is happening. Come on out," because I think, um, those, those invitations are, um, what really helps us. So thank you very much for that.
All members, any other reports?
I got nothing to report, Mr. President, in the interest of moving things along.
Okay. Michael?
Um, the only thing I have to report is I was at the Secretary of Education, the acting Secretary of Education at Allen Mid and Toby Turpin, the celebration of their increase in their scores there. Nice presentation.
Okay, thank you, Michael, and board members. Uh, there's some reports that, uh, or a report I want to make on some of the things that we've been working on, uh, meaning the superintendent and, uh, associate superintendents. One of them has to do with, uh, the bridges. I think bridges, uh, is a big issue. Uh, and when I first learned about the bridge issues, I asked about, uh, where all these bridges were located, and found out these bridges were located on Navajo land. So because of that, the superintendent and, and others, we met with the Navajo Nation president to talk to him about the bridges, the concerns that we have, and also for him to, uh, I guess, direct the Navajo Nation Division of Transportation to start looking at those bridges. So we met with the superintendent, I mean, the Navajo Nation president on that. Not only that, but we, I think one of the things that's happening now is that we're having certain chapters that are trying to get involved in personnel matters at the school district. And, uh, we wanted to see what the Navajo Nation can do on that in helping us. So we met with the president on those two issues. We also went before the, uh, Navajo Nation Board of Education, uh, and that was... We also went before the, uh, Navajo Nation Board of Education, uh, and that was for the administration from here to give a report on what's happening on Indian education within the school district. So that's one of the things that, that, um, I did. And this morning, I attended, uh, I guess you would say, uh, teacher's orientation or either, uh, here on the schedule, it says Professional Development Work Day. I started at eight o'clock with Crumpoint High School and, uh, spoke to the teachers there. Then I went down to the middle school and also spoke to the teachers there. And then from there, uh, went down to the elementary and did the same thing and I finished up with, uh, Catherine Miller as I was coming in. So, those are some of the things I've done. If there's no other reports, uh, maybe the next one is this on number seven. And these are just notices. Uh, August 7th and 8th, Professional Development Work Day. Uh, August 9th, Wednesday, first day of school. August 21st, our next sport meeting. And I just want to thank the superintendent, assistant superintendent, your staff. Uh, appreciate the things that you have done past school year. We're starting another school year and just encourage your employees to do a great job again in this new school year. So, and we don't have any old business. Let's go to new business. Uh, new business A. Superintendent?
Sure. President Long, members of the board, I'm going to have Javon, Ms. Javona Hanks come up and discuss a little bit about item 7A. Uh, this is an item that, uh, I wanted to talk about a little bit about the limits and some of the money things that have transacted, transactions that happen in the district. Uh, this again, and I will make sure if you would mention regarding contracts and things, all the board policy that has come to the boards that doesn't, that's not involved in this particular item. Thank you.
President Long, members of the board, Superintendent Hyatt, members of the audience. Currently what you have before you is two documents and essentially it's to authorize financial transactions and then also to finance, um, actual day-to-day business. So, we may bring to you an RFP or a bid which you'll approve and then we will actually sign the documents behind that that are approved by the Board of Education. Um, also, many of you know we issue purchase orders. Those are actually called purchase contracts. Um, so those are actually legally binding documents on behalf of the district. And due to new state laws, we have one individual who is certified to sign those, which is, uh, Marco Abada. He's our chief procurement officer. Um, so these types of designations are essentially for those types of day-to-day transactions. Um, additionally, we reconcile all of the district's bank accounts monthly. This gives us the ability to, if we see any transactions that are of issue, to be able to reach out to those financial institutions, initiate stop payments, protest or report fraud, um, any, any type of those activities. Um, I will tell you that the documents currently in place do have our former superintendent, Frank Chappetti, listed as being authorized for these transactions. So I felt it very necessary for as soon as possible that we get these changed to our new superintendent. And I'm definitely open to any questions or concerns. Um, I will tell you that currently, Sinning Gabai and myself are the authorized signers on the two checking accounts that we have, um, and that all of those checks are actually emailed to the board members weekly for your review. Um, in addition to that, those are also posted on the GMCS website for the public to review.
Okay. All members, questions?
I, yes, I do. Um, I just want to make some clarifications for myself, um, and Javona, if you can assist me and, 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 um, correct in my comments if, um, if they're not correct or Mr. Hyatt. Um, the, this is, uh, all, is that me? Okay. Um, the, the, the board is ultimately responsible for the financial, um, transactions, um, for the school district. Um, under, you know, that was brought from, when we talked to the, uh, the guy in Santa Fe, I'm sorry, Maxwell. And, you know, it, if anything, um, and I know we've done this before, Mike sent me some, uh, because that was my question, you know, have we done this? I, and the reason why I probably don't remember is it had, um, Mr. Tempest and Manini, um, sign it last time. Um, so the, when we're, um, delegating individuals, um, you know, it binds the board to, because we're the ones that are always getting sued, if anything happens, we're the ones that are, will be the vi- in violation of the laws. And I know there was mentioned one time, I don't know where, it was a policy that we could, um, if it's over 5,000 or 10,000, that we still needed board approval. Uh, is it for this one too, or is that just a different, um, policy?
So, Manuelito, members of the board, I'm not quite sure what, what exactly you're referencing, but currently we don't have a monetary threshold. And just to kind of give you an idea, as I'm sure you, uh, accounts payable that we actually issue, if we did that, the board would be reviewing hundreds of transactions every week because we run paychecks.
No, I mean, not, not the, not to say the...
Sure. No, and, and, and like I said, we want to provide complete transparency to the board. That's why we give you a list of all the checks that we issue through accounts payable. Um, there is a system of internal controls to assure that one person cannot, within the system, do a transaction. It takes many layers of approval for a transaction to actually occur. Um, bank accounts are reconciled every single month. All of those are turned over to an external auditor. In addition to that, we report quarterly to the Public Education Department with copies of our bank statements and a reconciliation of our general ledger. While I a hundred percent understand your concerns, there are some administrative day-to-day things that I just, I don't know how we could put that, that type of a threshold on it just because, like I said, we do cut checks once a week currently for accounts payable. We're about to pull all of student activity funds into that. And then of course, the bi-weekly issue of paychecks and all associated payroll vendors.
And, and, you know, those are, these, what I'm saying is just that, you know, I, I know it's not the, the, the 5,000 in example, I see every, with our statements that we get, it, you know, sometimes we're at 45,000 and stuff, but, you know, I, I know that there, there are other districts that do put a stipulation that a certain amount is, goes through board approval. But I think I just really want that clarification for our new board members and you making the, the statements that you made, that they, they know too, that, you know, this is something with the layers that you talked to, talked about. Because even with a small company as mine, um, we always have to have a second signature. And, you know, I think that's, you know, it, it's, it's more transparency, more accountability. And I think that's something that, um, I'm glad that we do do, but I think just having the explanations and to, to know that, you know, even though, yes, you guys are making these decisions and signing off, it's ultimately us that...
Yes, and, and again, any reports that you like, any transparency that you would like, I would be more than happy to provide that. But we do really try to provide internal controls that do two things. They both protect the employee and the district. A good internal control will prevent someone from having the opportunity or the access to do wrong. And on the other side, it's going to prevent the district from having that loss. It's not going to work a hundred percent of the time, but for the most part, it is going to work. And I'll tell you that as the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, I have a lot of control in that office. But anyone in that office will tell you, "I don't have access to any of the checks of the district because my signature is on that check. They are locked up. I do not have access in any way, shape or form to them." And the reason for that is because I know that's a good internal control to make sure that someone in my position has no ability to be able to get into those types of documents, that there's a process that's followed and it's followed every single time. And, and hopefully, any of my staff will tell you, whether I tell them or the superintendent tells them, they're not going to follow a different process from the process they're authorized. And that's another part of internal controls, is that every part in the system knows that there's a system and that no one has the authority to override it.
And I think that's a, um, you know, within our, our chapter, um, you know, they don't, a lot of them don't know that. Um, they, they think of, of the board as an entity that controls that. And I, you know, that's one thing that, you know, they're saying, "Well, you guys are, you know, writing checks out to yourselves," or "You guys are doing this." And it's like, we don't even see a check in our life to, to even approve, to, you know, um, sign or anything, you know, we don't, that's not, that we are the budget, we, you know, we, we, you know, help with the budget and, you know, that's about it and approve different things. But I think that, you know, there's a misconception out there that as board members, you know, we're, we're getting pretty rich and we're not.
No, and, and if any of, if one of you has applied for reimbursement, you'll know it is not the easiest process on earth and we want all the documents.
Yes, I think, uh, this is a routine thing that happens every year. Uh, Navajo Nation, I guess, calls this Signature Authorization Sheet, which pretty much, uh, delegates, uh, to certain individuals that they can sign up on checks, uh, on behalf of the district and all that. And I see the, uh, internal control already built in, into this process. So, what is the pleasure of the board?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the authorization for specified Allen-McKinley County School Administrator Staff to sign documents and conduct business on behalf of the district.
Motion's been made. Roll call, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you very much, board.
Yeah, thank you. Let's go down to item B. Approval of, uh, MOU between the school district and University of New Mexico College of Education.
President Long, members of the board, this is, uh, hopefully, hopefully a simple one. We continually work with U&amp;M in providing opportunities for their student teachers to work in our district. And this is simply, uh, an MOU to make sure that, uh, you know, we are working in a productive way on behalf of not only our district and our students, but also helping those teachers become ready and certified through that program at U&amp;M. So that's all this is.
All members, it is a pleasure.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding.
Uh, question, sir. Um, Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Um, is Univers- University of New Mexico's not here?
No, they're not.
And I saw on here that they want level, above level two teachers. How many of them do we have that would, um, that's interested in this? And then how will, if there's more, if there's a lot, how will they be selected, um, to do this?
That is a good question. I just got thrown this with, uh, when Mrs. Lee could not make it tonight. Um, from what I understand is that the, the, the U&amp;M and also the district decide on where a good place for them would be. It's not like a random drawing or anything like that. And so, the, we let the U&amp;M have some input. We want to make sure that they're comfortable with it, they're work comfortable with it, and that teachers comfortable with it. Obviously, we want to make sure that it's a good success story for that student teacher and also so that it's not having any negative impact. We wouldn't want to put two divorces in the same room together, for example.
And I like the, I like the part where this district agrees that, you know, there's, um, provide information regarding placement opportunities at schools with strong bilingual and T-SO, T-SO programs. Um, you know, I, and I don't mind approving this and voting for it tonight, but I would really like Ms. Lee or U&amp;M Gallup to see, um, how we're going to be, how this will be, you know, like a report. I mean, I, I really would like to see, um, them come back and tell us about this and how it's working and, you know, how, like, my question, you know, how, who are they going to pick? Um, and how many? And, you know, because I know that if we continue to grow our own and work towards that direction, it's going to be, um, something that we need to invest in and continue to help our teachers in our area, so...
Good questions, Ms. Manuelito. And we're not forcing anybody to do this. This is, uh, volunteer basis with respect to the, the teachers in the classroom.
So, motion's been made. Uh, roll call, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you, board members. Let's go down to, uh, item C. Another MOU.
President Long, members of the board, um, item D. If you have ever been up to, uh, the old Ol' Niatee School on the north side of town, up above the school is a hill which allows for a lot of line-of-sight access to the, I'm sorry, did I skip one? Oh, I'm sorry. I combined those, I had them both circled together, so I'll let you guys, this is the same item, it's just the addendum that's also in there with, which gives out more information about our relationship with the MOU with U&amp;M, so...
All members?
I would like to make the motion that we approve the...
Okay, thank you, Michael. Roll call, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Can I just request that, um, with the same as B, that we get, uh, report or presentation by Mrs. Lee, uh, motioning party?
Ms. Manuelito?
Is that okay? Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
808.
Okay, thank you, board members. We approve that. Let's go down to item D.
Thank you, President Long, members of the board. As I was mentioning, uh, a little too quickly, that we have a piece of land, which is the top of the hill behind Ol' Niatee, uh, that McKinley County would like to have a, a lease with us so that they can put an emergency services, service tower because of its line-of-sight access to a lot of Gallup in the area. Um, and so that's what this is, this is regarding.
Uh, Mr. President, our motion to approve.
Your motion's been made. Uh, roll call, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Okay. So, item has been approved. Uh, let's go down to E.
President Long, members of the board, I'd like to, that's, that's an item for after the executive session.
Okay.
So, okay. So I need a motion to go into executive session?
I would like to make a motion that we go into executive session.
Okay, motion's been made. Roll call?
Mr. Mitchell? Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
808.
Executive session. They always say, "Let's go into, uh, Pacheti Ja." Let's go into the sweat house.
I would like to... I would like to make a motion that we come out of executive session.
Okay, motion's been made. Roll call?
Mr. Mitchell? Ms. Manulito? Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
9:01.
Pushing. Just hoping it would get done by eight. Anyway, we're, under new business, we're at item E. Per our discussion in the executive session, I'd like to entertain a motion. I guess the way the motion is going to be is that make a motion to approve this and with the resolution attached.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion, as it says in the agenda here, to authorize Gallup McKinley County Board of Education to replace Gallup McKinley County School District in the Zuni lawsuit through either amendment substitution or filing a new action and requesting consolidation.
Okay.
And I guess we have the...
Resolution.
The resolution. I don't know if we want to read that or just keep it as a, as a, an exhibit for each of us or whatever's going on.
As part of the motion, so I'll go ahead and read the resolution. The resolution pretty much says continued participation in the Zuni lawsuit. Whereas the Zuni Public School District filed a lawsuit in McKinley County District Court on January 15, 1998, challenging the constitutionality of New Mexico's capital outlay process for funding construction of public schools. And whereas the Board of Education of the Gallup McKinley County School District authorized the superintendent to take necessary legal steps to join the lawsuit against a state related to unequal educational opportunity, related to capital outlay and equalization by resolution dated February 23rd, 23, 1998. And whereas the Gallup McKinley County School District One was allowed by the court to intervene in the Zuni lawsuit on December 9, 1998. And whereas the Board of Education of the Gallup McKinley County School District has continuously supported the district's involvement as a party in the action from its inception and continues to support the district's participation in the suit. And whereas the Gallup McKinley County District Court entered an order partially dismissing Gallup McKinley County School District's complaint in the Zuni lawsuit on July 19, 2017. Whereas the Gallup County, McKinley County District Court order dismissing the complaint stated that the legislature has not provided school districts with the power to sue and be sued, but rather has conferred this power on local school boards. Whereas the Gallup McKinley County Board of Education seeks to replace the Gallup McKinley County School District as a party in the Zuni lawsuit through amendment and/or substitution or alternatively to file a new action if necessary. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Gallup McKinley County School District resolves that the Board of Education seek amendment and/or substitution to replace the Gallup McKinley County School District in the Zuni lawsuit or alternatively to file a new action. Adopted, I guess, the 7th of August, 2017. So, motions been made to approve the action item E along with the resolution that I just read. Motions been made. Roll call, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manulito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Okay, we pass the resolution along with the action item. Passed it on the agenda. And that concludes our business.
I would like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, motions been made to adjourn. Roll call, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manulito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen? Mr. Long?
Yes.